One.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the Monday, April 18th, Budget Workshop and Regular Board of Education Meeting. Before we begin, if you could all take a moment, just make sure your phones are placed on silent so they avoid interruptions during our meeting. And if you would mind, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As you can see, we only have four of us tonight, so we're serving multiple roles. Phil, if you could take role?
Yep. President McFarland?
Here.
Vice President Roush? Here. Secretary Hatfield is absent. Treasurer Lauterbach?
Here.
Member Baker is absent. Member LaZee?
Here.
And then Member Frazee is absent. But we do have a quorum.
Okay. Well, let's move forward. All right. Sorry, that might have been loud. First up, we have requests to address the board. Is that the right order?
Just for the budget.
Just for the budget workshop?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bonnies, I have you on the list here. Please keep your comments, limit your comments to the budget information only. There will be another point during the evening during our regular meeting when the board can be addressed as well. So, Mr. Bonnies, that said, the floor is yours. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I, this is my first time coming to this kind of meeting, and I just want to have two concepts in your head as we go through all this. Government's been giving you guys lots of money, and you're doing all sorts of stuff with it. Mr. Bruton's juggling things, all sorts of stuff. We heard that last time. What I would like to know is, when the government turns off the extra stuff, can you maintain everything you're building? Can you afford the overhead that you're taking on with all this new stuff? That's, you know, doing it for the sake of we have the money is nice, but if it's going to fall apart because you can't afford to maintain it, it's a net loss for everything. And the second point I'd like to make is, you've accepted all sorts of money on all sorts of different programs, and a lot of the stuff that came in, all of the conditions were not easy to find as to what the limitations were you can spend the money. And I'm not talking about economic levels or any of that kind of stuff, but the one that I seem to recall was having to have a vaccine distribution clinic in a school as a result of one of the funds was like, that's, that was one of the stuff that was out in the public domain. I think it was applying, you know, what are, you know, what are you agreeing to in all the fine print? There's a lot of fine print in these things. That's, my main points is, just because the money's there, should you take it? You're signing rights away for you, the town, the students. Is it the right answer? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Number three, the board discussion and prioritization of 2022, '23 general fund budget.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Good evening, Scott. Brad, Phil, John. Good to talk with you this evening about our budget workshop. As a reminder to the board, the budget workshop really has two intentions to it. The first intention of the budget workshop is to give you a picture of where we are at financially in the district. You get a couple of snapshots for that along the way. You get it when Yo and Yo presents our annual audit to you. You also get it when we do our budget adjustments as well. I give you little snippets of it. But tonight is intended to be more of a macro overview of where we are as a district, and also to tell the story of how we got to the position that we are today, and talk about some of the lessons learned and some of the best practices that put us onto the solid financial grounds that we are. Number two, and I'll have to apologize because this section's going to be a bit limited, is intended to share with you what we know about the budgets that are coming at us for next fiscal year. Hopefully, in the future, we will have three different versions of budgets to present to you. We would have the House, the Senate, and the Executive. Today, all we have is the Executive, so I will give you a snapshot of what the governor has proposed, and Mike and I have heard from our associations. Hopefully, within the next two to three weeks, we might be seeing something come audible at the House and the Senate, and so the picture will tend to clear up a little bit more for us. So, those are the two intentions. Tonight is intended to be a conversation between us, so please feel free to stop me. Once I start talking too many numbers too quickly, feel free to interrupt. Ask me questions. I'm here to try and help understand this as much as we can. In the timeline, we are at the budget workshop. Our departments are deep, deep, deep into planning for next year already. We will have our first budget to propose to you on June the 6th. There will be the interim period in between, and then on the 20th, we will bring it to you for adoption, as well as the final approval of our budgets for the fiscal year. So, our first financial snapshot for the district, and I know these are a bit hard to see, this is where we currently stand fiscally in our fund balance and our financial composition within the Midland Public Schools. There's a couple of numbers that you can find if you're really staring deep into this sheet. The first one that I was, everyone always asks about is our total fund balance, and if you can see in the bottom right corner, our total fund balance as a district stands at just over 33%, which is considered to be very, very healthy as a district. We like to talk in terms of unassigned fund balance, and a lot of the numbers that we present, that's the number right below that, 33, and you can see that we're sitting at around 27%. Your unassigned fund balance is truly your rainy day fund, your savings or your piggy bank, per se. One of the things that Superintendent Sherrill has found to be very important for the fiscal stability of the district is also to start siloing some dollars within our fund balance, and you can see in the middle that we have several pots of money that are reserved. We have met a goal of assigning a million dollars for copiers to be replaced once the bond is done with those. We stopped leasing when we came into the bond, and we've been siloing money to be able to replace those when the time comes. Technology, we've been able to set a million dollars aside as well, adding about a quarter million a year to that pot. That pot we'll never stop saving for, as you will see later on in the agenda this evening. Devices are expensive, and you have to be able to be responsible to save for those so you can replace those in due time when the bond does run out. Because we had met our goal for the post-bond copiers to get ourselves to a million dollars, we started an additional silo for bus replacements, and last year, we were able to put $200,000 into that. So, certain pieces of your fund balance are set aside for being fiscally responsible into the future, and others are what we consider to be our rainy day fund. So, as we sit in a district perspective right now, our general fund balance is sitting in a very, very healthy spot. As a reminder, your fund balance is important for three main reasons. Number one, it prevents the need to borrow for cash flow during the periods of time that we do not receive state aid. It affords for opportunities to address the needs that pop up annually, and it also assists in times of fiscal challenges in being able to maintain programming and not have to make drastic sweeps or cuts one way or another. It allows you to maintain programming during those times. It's important to put this into historical perspective. If you want to play with the statistics on this just a little bit, if you look at the last 14 years, we've been able to add to the fund balance seven of those 14 years. Six of the seven have come during the past six consecutive years. So, again, as a district, in our total fund balance, we're sitting in a very, very healthy spot at the current time. I talked about our unassigned fund balance and how there's a difference between the regular overall fund balance and the unassigned fund balance, but I did want to take some time to point out some of the unique things that we've done as a district to, A, be fair to our employees when we are financially healthy, but B, also be fiscally responsible to the Board of Education and to our position to make sure that we are mitigating some of the risk. And so, we have tied many of our contracts and our salary increases to the percentage in which our unassigned fund balance lies. Currently, the rates that we have negotiated, you can see the different thresholds. If we hit 20%, that means that there will be an additional 1.5% raise given on top of an already guaranteed 1% raise for the Teachers Association, and typically we tie a lot of our other contracts to that as well, too. This is a model that we like to employ because, again, of the fiscal responsibility nature of that piece. There's a lot to look at here, but this was a chart that Mr. Cooper put into play when he was in charge in the role that I was, and he liked to put the different color differences on there between pink and greens. When you're seeing a pink in the revenue expenditure, all that's indicating to you is that the district adopted a deficit budget at the beginning of the year, predicting that they would spend more money than they took in. The green indicates on the right side of that, that you finished in a position that where you put dollars back into your general fund. Just because you're predicting that you're going to be to the negative at the beginning of the year, you can see that our trend over the past several years has been that we've been able and blessed and fortunate to be able to add to our fund balance. But there is a significant statistic that Mr. Cooper always pointed out, and he'd be mad at me if I didn't. We are still $82 per pupil below where our high point was back in '08, '09. Adjusted for inflation, you can do the math on that, we're still not to the levels that we were several, several years ago. So, we're going to switch now, and we're going to switch to telling the story of why we today are in such a solid financial spot in Midland Public Schools. And you'll see that there's some notations in red on this slide. And I want to approach these slides not in a way that invokes any sort of panic. I just want to simply point out that some of the statistics that we're seeing point to the fact that we are probably entering a period where we're not going to be adding very, very generous amounts to our fund balance like we've been able to do the past six or seven years. We don't foresee any sort of issues, but we do see some periods and some indicators in our statistics that the days of adding four and five million will be coming to an end at some point in the near fiscal future. So, the first reason, why did MPS get back on financial footing? Mike always says this, it's about the kids in seats, and it's about the number of staff members that you have. So, from '08, '09 to '13, '14 on those previous graphs where you saw the declines, MPS was averaging 235 student decline per year. We are funded per student. When you're losing 235 students per year, you're fighting a battle every single year to be able to make up those revenues. From '14, '15 to '19, '20, we beat our enrollment specialist predictions, and we only dropped an average of eight students per year, leading to a period of enrollment stability. Why did that happen? It's hard to point to any one specific reason, but many strategic efforts, Young Five, STEM, IBPYP, PATH, et cetera, et cetera, we believe helped us beat what those predictions were on our enrollment. I do want to focus in on enrollment because there's a couple of things in our trend lines that look a little bit off, but I do want to point to the fact, again, that we're beating the predictions that our enrollment consultant said for us. Last year, I said several times to you that the government redid the way that they count students, and they reversed the mathematics on how they counted kids. They gave us a pandemic formula. They gave the previous year before the pandemic more weight than the year of the pandemic, giving us a false reading of the number of students that we had. This graph shows you a very smooth trend line that shows that government pandemic formula in play. If that formula never came into play and the traditional method of counting came in, you can see that during the pandemic, enrollment did decline, and you could see that in 2022, we've actually gained students back, more students than we had the previous year. Our actual count for this year has come in at about 7513, as Mike reported to you a couple of weeks back. This is around 300 students more than what our consultants predicted would be our enrollment about four years ago. So, again, we're beating the trends, and even though the line looks a little bit odd there, we're still sitting in a better spot than we were predicted. I added a graphic on here for you. This is simply superimposing the state's enrollment through the period of the pandemic, and you can see that those trend lines basically mirror each other based on how you tweak the X and Y axes. Theirs looks a little bit more steep, they being the state of Michigan than MPS, but this is a story around the state that was pretty typical for all of the public schools and how enrollment was handled through the pandemic. In terms of dollars, remember, dollars are tied to students. The traditional formula versus the pandemic blend, I pointed this out last year, based on how you look at the math, you can say that we've either lost $1.4 million or gained $542,000 based on if you're talking about the traditional formula versus the pandemic formula. It's just illustrating, again, that some of the interventions put in place by the government were advantageous to MPS and to other school districts throughout the state. Another piece that we need to focus on, state funding stabilization. During the hard times, from '08, '09 to '13, '14, on top of losing over 200 students per year, the state was cutting the foundation per student at a rate of about $113 per year in MPS. That reversed itself, not quite even our apples for apples, but from '14, '15 to '21, '22, the average was a $73 increase per student. So, not only did our enrollment stabilize, we were able to get extra revenues per student as well. I can't emphasize enough how important the bond was to MPS as well, too. Not only did it allow us to build and improve our facilities, but it allowed us to employ energy efficiency throughout the district and be able to save on bills. I believe once we added air conditioning in every single building, we were net neutral because of some of the efficiencies that we put into play, which is an absolute blessing. It also caused us not to have to rely on our general fund for other capital improvements, purchasing of technology, purchasing of buses, which allowed us to put those dollars into the classroom where they belong. In red, some of the notes. Due to the restructure, you had to listen to me in the fall talk a lot and put some slides up about how the state has restructured the Hold Harmless Millage. The days of MPS being funded in measure beyond most of its peer districts, we used to be able to look at that number and say, we are significantly beyond. Those days are gone. We are still beyond by a touch, but because of the way that the state raised the minimum foundation and equalized all districts throughout the state, we no longer will be funded beyond what most typical districts in the state of Michigan are. Other areas to point out of why MPS is in a solid financial state, our employees were a big part of that. From '10, '11 to '16, '17, this isn't a stat that anyone likes to give, but concessionary, or excuse me, employee increases were at 0% or they were concessionary going backwards. I'm happy to state that we've been able to reinstate raises in '17, '18, and for every year since, we've been able to give to employees. And again, we tie those increases to where our financial position is to make sure that we're being fair to employees but also protecting the district if there are unforeseen circumstances. There's lots of other reasons, too. Restructuring of central office, retirement incentives that Superintendent Sherrill put into play, which I'll focus on in just a little bit. Grant procurement and some strategic uses of our funding as well, which has led us to be in the position that we are. And also, as we pointed out and talked about in length, the supplementary funds that have helped us weather the effects of COVID-19, I don't need to belabor this point. You had to listen to me for a half hour last meeting on this, but we do have approximately 9.9 million of those dollars left over the next three fiscal years. One point that I was kind of upset at myself for not driving home in the last meeting, but I think it came out naturally through the conversation, MPS is not choosing to supplant our general fund obligations with ESAR funds. And what that means is, there are districts that can simply take the dollars in and pay for what their normal or traditional costs are in a year, and use whatever those accrued savings are to bolster their general fund. You could simply pay payroll with it if you wanted to. To us, that wasn't what the intent of the funds were. The intent of the funds were to help kids now because they need that help because of the effects of the pandemic, and so instead of just taking that 9.9 or 13.28 total and just padding our general fund more and more, we've chosen to put those dollars to work, and Penny and I presented to you on how we are choosing to do that last time. I talked about this-
Brian-
Yes, sir.
Put a finer point on that. We're taking one-time funds and allocating them to one-time expenses.
That's exactly correct. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Not using the money. You know, Mr. Bonnies raised a good point.
That's correct.
Some districts are doing that.
Yeah.
Paying their ongoing expenses with one-time funds were not.
That's correct. And also, some folks also, we're being very cautious not to build in salary schedules related to these funds as well, too, that are ongoing expenses the district in three or four years won't be able to.
The other piece I would add is any staffing change we've accounted for, and through attrition, those staffing would fill our future needs if those grant dollars completely go away. So, we've planned for all of those pieces of that.
It is tradition for us to present to you State Bulletin 1014 data, and every single year, you have to reabsorb what this chart is actually telling you. We'll draw your attention to the highlights, and the highlights, you can see that this is based on 821 school districts in the state of Michigan. And the state releases this data to let you know how you are spending your money in comparison to your peers, per pupil. And so, a couple of things that we like to point out, when you're looking at the very bottom line, the total sources, these are all dollars coming into MPS, not our private grant dollars, but federal, state, local. MPS was ranking in the 200s in '17, '18, '18, '19, and Brad, last year, you were very keen to point out that we moved from 296 to 406 in one year, and that was a great observation because that is MPS moving toward the middle of the pack. As I told you, the effects of that enhanced Hold Harmless were going away. We've moved back down into the 300s this year, and there's an explanation for that. If you look at the line above, we expended more federal sources than we typically do. Those were our ESAR dollars last fiscal year. That has put kind of a mitigating effect on that total source dollar amount. We expect for the next couple of years, you might see the same, but as we talk about later, if we do get some 31A dollars coming from the state, it'll be interesting to see where that goes. Whether or not this fluctuates a little bit in the next two to three years, in three or four, you're going to see MPS toward the middle of the pack. That's that mitigating effect of what the Hold Harmless formula change has done. On this slide, I'd like to draw your attention to the very bottom. This is your instructional salaries and benefits, and you can see that in terms of expenditures per pupil, MPS on the dollars that we are spending basically in the classroom on instruction, we rank 130th out of 821. MPS was typically in the 100s. We did move into the twos, as you can see, in '17, '18, and '18, '19. That was directly correlated to when we did the Teacher Retirement Incentive Plan. When you're taking teachers that are at the top, you're replacing it with teachers that are at the bottom of the salary scale, the lower amount, then you'll see that number move, and you could see now that when it's at around 130, that the short-term savings affected that retirement incentive have basically been wiped out. And so, we're back into that 100s, which is where MPS has been historically. That's a number that you can be proud of. That's showing that you're putting dollars into the right spot into the classroom. We always point out in this slide as well, too, that business and administration and operations and maintenance, we are proud of these numbers as well, too. When MPS is ranked 745th out of 821 in business and administration, that's an area you can say, yes, they are really, really operating efficiently, but I also would caution you and say that that also may need you to look strategically at investing in some of those areas as well, too. You know that you do need good leaders and to be able to attract talented leaders as well, too. So, those are areas that we look at and say, should we really be in that area, or should we be investing more and more? A couple of years back, Brad pointed out, we did add a Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. We're taking a look at some other positions as well, too, that may help with some other areas of identified need, and so we constantly watch these and analyze these numbers as well, too, to make sure MPS is prioritizing what they need to.
Can you go back one more?
Yes, sir.
So, for instructor salaries and benefits, the basic programs number, is that related to, we have a jump of $1,000, which, 5,294 to 6,242, is that simply through wage increase?
No, we would attribute those to the number of teachers that we added last year. If you remember, we were offering enhanced, we had teachers that were teaching virtually, we had teachers that were teaching in person, and we had a larger staff and more instructors than we've had in a long time. And so, when you're talking about those numbers that comprise that bottom, it's the top three that make up that bottom, and so those basic programs are number of instructors that make that up, and we were pouring a lot of dollars into that. In addition, we had incentives for teachers to teach extra. We had certain teachers, Mr. Hackarth was one of them, that was teaching extra classes that were virtual after the school day, compensating them for that, and also summer school programs as well, too.
So, do you think that number of the basic programs will go down for '21, '22?
I would see it going back into the twos and threes, and I would see that you would probably have fluctuations in categories that are related to the social emotional supports, added supports for students as well, too, and those might move a little. It's going to be really interesting to see what these numbers do as schools throughout the state start to employ their dollars. It's going to have an interesting effect on what happens. As you, I don't remember who pointed it out at the last board meeting, Brad, I think it was you. There are certain districts that got a billion dollars, whereas we had about 13. As they start to get those resources deployed, it's probably going to send these numbers going in odd spots for the next couple of years.
I'm not sure the rankings will be as accurate next year-
Yeah.
-when Flint spends, starts to spend their billions, so it'll be interesting.
Right, it's going to be all over the place.
It's going to be, yeah. It'll level itself out, well, three, four years.
The salary, the instructional salaries and benefits line is a helpful reference point. Is it, is the data available to do an apples-to-apples, like a fifth-year math teacher in middle public schools, if they tax, and a fifth-year high school math teacher in Detroit, if, you know, Detroit public schools, if they-
Not within this report, John, but we could probably go after that because a part of transparency reporting is you have to post contracts, so we can go dig and datamine anything along those lines, but we could probably go pull those dollars.
It'd be interesting to know where we rank on apples-to-apples.
For sure.
We rank high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, I can pull some numbers for you. Be happy to.
That tomorrow.
Yeah.
As Brian said-
Yes, sir.
-there isn't one database that has that, so we have to go on everybody's transparency website, pull that one salary, so.
Yeah. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide either. This was a part of my budget adjustment that I gave you in the past, in the past board meeting. This is simply where we currently stand with our budget, and I do want to point out, and this is my footnote for job protection for Brian, we're still experiencing abnormal fluctuations based on the pandemic. I'll just give you one that just came from a meeting that we just had about a week ago. At the budget adjustment, we added a million dollars of revenues and a correlating million dollars of expenditures for the Northeast Middle School HVAC project. You all approved that a couple of board meetings back. We know now, after the last meeting that we had, that we're only going to get about a third of that work done in June. So, already, I know, because of some of the effects that we're having here, that you're going to see an adjustment on the next budget. It'll take a million dollars off and only add a third, excuse me, take two-thirds of that expenditures off and only add one-third of the revenues that we had previously planned. So, you're going to keep seeing jumps that are a little bit outside of the box as we go through that.
Just to find out a little further, Brian, it just moves ahead a month. It'll be in the next fiscal year, that's all.
That's right. So, they'll still happen. It'll still be there. It'll just be built into the next fiscal year budgets. So, as we look into developing our next budgets, the revenue factors, student enrollment is something we talked a lot about, state and local funding and our grants are something that we analyze. For expenditures, we are a people business, and our trend has always been solid that our personnel costs always are right around the 85% mark. The other 15% are things that do get a lot of attention from some folks, but personnel costs are really what drives a very, very large majority of our budget. We're constantly chasing benefits, retirement, staffing levels, and trying to adjust ourselves throughout the year. These are the other things that we talked about. That's the other 15% of the budget, textbooks, PD, et cetera, et cetera, and all things that we meet with the departments to analyze their needs on an ongoing basis. As we kind of turn the corner now, this is the area that I said I have to apologize because our information at this point in time is lacking. We typically will show you the current year, what the governor has proposed, and also what the Senate and the House have proposed as well, too. You can see when staring very closely at this, that we only have one of those columns populated. That is the governor, as I pointed out at the beginning of this presentation. The governor's proposal looks great to us. If those numbers actually come to fruition, we would be in a position where we think that we would, once again, be on very solid financial ground going into the future. It never quite works out that way. The governor was proposing a $435 increase per student, also rolling in our $64 Hold Harmless into our actual foundation, which would be very, very advantageous to us. For MPS as a whole, it would raise our foundation to $9,257 per student, which would erase what I had to say about 10 slides back. We no longer will be below where we were back in '08, '09. I do want to point out a call for lobbying. If you are talking to your legislators on this slide, if you look at the 1, 2, 3, fourth column down, fourth row down, I should say, currently in MPS, we receive just around, just over $700,000 in what we call 31A dollars or dollars that are used for students that are classified as at-risk. That is 35% of the normal calculation. The reason that we're at 35% is because we are a Hold Harmless district that was collecting a foundation beyond what other districts were. Now that most districts in the state are funded at nearly the exact same level, the governor has proposed all districts receive in- the governor has proposed all districts receive an equal funding amount of $1,050 per economically disadvantaged student that they have. You can see my rough calculations, if your eyes are real good. That would mean a total estimate of around $2.8 million for MPS, or an increase in at-risk funding of just over $2 million, right about $2.1 million. That is something that we have been lobbying for hard here in MPS, and if you are talking with one of the representatives, that's something that we would love to see in the Senate proposal and also the House proposal as well, too. We believe that those dollars should follow the kids regardless of where your district is funded, and that's something that we would appreciate your lobbying efforts on. It's important to MPS. So, as I pointed out, the Senate and the House, we hope to hear those in the next two weeks, three weeks, and I'm sure Mike will update you through the Friday letter on what some of those proposals look like. We then have to kind of take a prediction, and I, if I had all three, we kind of throw a dart at the board and try and find the middle of where all the proposals are. I didn't spend much time on doing this because we're so early in the process right now, but I just wanted to iterate for you what it might look like. So let's say it came out to an increase of $325 per student, and MPS lost 75 students. I'm not saying that's what our prediction is right now. We're still looking at enrollment very closely. We're still waiting on enrollment predictions. But if that happened, it would have a revenue change to the positive for middle and public schools of just over $1.7 million if it came in at a 325-plus per kid with a decline of 75 kids. We'll again, watch our enrollment trends. We'll take a look at what the state is saying about per-student funding, and we'll refine what those are. In a very first glance at expenditures, and these are us just putting initial numbers on paper and taking guesses at medical costs. We're still working through the staffing process. We're still hiring teachers, et cetera. But at first glance on paper, we're looking at next year, an increase of expenditures of somewhere around $2.7, $2.76 million. Again, this is all highly variable on what our staffing levels look like and what our benefit costs in as well, too. We do not have what our medical cost increases are going to be for next year, so this number is highly variable as well. We again, refine these once we know more from our internal processes and also what happens at the state level. So, the variables, the things that we're going to keep looking at, Mike watches our student enrollment numbers like a hawk. We get a weekly update on those. Our principals actually are doing a great job with kindergarten enrollment. Mike can comment more on that, but our numbers at this point in time are more positive than they have been in the past, so that's a great thing. State and local funding, there has been an equalization, as I've talked about, in the hold harmless restructure. Medical costs are something that's also been a bit odd during the pandemic. They didn't go up as much as we thought they were because elective procedures were down. And we're wondering now, if we're coming out of this pandemic, if we're going to see a push in the other direction on those, as well as maybe some inflationary pushes on that as well. Variance is another thing that we've been very blessed to be able to capture each and every single year, the difference of what we plan to spend versus what we actually do. We will continue to rely on variance, but our trends and our numbers are showing that we do not expect to capture as big as a variance that we have in the past. So, moving forward, you will hear from me again on the budget on June the 6th, where I will give you what our actual predictions are. Hopefully by that time, the House and the Senate have come through, and we have something that looks a little bit closer to actual numbers. We will continue refining our current year's budget, bring that to you again on the 20th, and then we will ask for your official action and adoption of that budget at that meeting as well, too. So at that point, that's the information that I have for you this evening. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have, or look into any other things for you.
I'd like to add something about enrollment. It's interesting that at one time, so our enrollment expert uses birth rates and he tracks that through, and we're supposed to decline simply because of birth rates. So when Brian says loss of students, really not loss of students, it's students graduating and less coming in because of birth rates. For years, his formula showed that we got 72% of those born in birth rates in Midland County, and we're up to 78% of that percentage. And so we're attracting more kindergarteners to our school every school year. So if you look at our overall enrollment, when Brian talks stabilization, that's K6, 7. Those numbers are actually up, and our smallest classes are in our high school. So if we keep that trend going, it could be a positive that the bigger classes will continue through once you get all 13 classes, and that could be a positive number. So we'll continue to watch that.
Brian, I had a question of fuel. I think that we had a very aggressive vendor that we had a contract with. Is there any fine print to any of that? I mean, that was based on futures and all, and I can't remember what it was. Alls I know is it was a great price.
Fuel's an interesting piece. So what they, what we really bid and what you get to discount is delivery to you. So they're probably regretting that bid a little bit right now because they're also paying that high fuel when they're delivering to you. So that's really where you get it. So if the market went up so many dollars a barrel, so did our price overall, but you, they're locked in on the delivery portion of the fuel. So that's, and they can't go above that cap. So we're probably making out really well because they're probably paying more than that themselves. They're, you know, paying that same for something, or more for diesel, right? So.
Right. Also, the chance that they walk away from it, too.
I suppose they could rescind their contract. I've never seen that occur, but yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Maybe one quick one for clarification. The chart that you showed, Brian, where we do have some employee wages that are tied to fund balance?
Yes, sir.
Those incentives, are those one-time for the following school year, or are they permanent?
They become permanent. Yeah, the way that they've been structurally built has been similar. The numbers are a little bit different over contracts, but there's typically a guarantee, and then there's an additional on, in the contract that becomes a legacy. Now, if you look two contracts back, I believe it's two, they were supposed to be only one time, but we did roll those on as a portion of our negotiations. We took what was supposed to be off-schedule, moved it on-schedule. The way they're currently built, it is on-schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we are in our consent agenda. This is item 4.1, approval of minutes. Hi, Penny. Approval of minutes from the March 21, 22 regular meeting. Item 4.2 is approval of closed section minutes from March 21, 2022 regular meeting. Item 4.3 contains a list of staff that have announced their resignation, as well as effective dates. 4.4 is payment of school system's bills. 4.5 is approval, request to authorize legal payments to the Trueness Law Firm in the amount of $13,102.50 for legal fees, and I will accept a motion for approval.
I just add on the legal fees, that one is the purchase of their policy manual. That's the large portion. So it's not, yeah, I just want to put 11,000 of that as policy manual going forward.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Lauderbach, support by Mr. Roush. Any further discussion regarding
the consent agenda items?
I just had a side note. What you were talking about, those bylaws, and you, if you want to talk about it later, that's fine. What is our plan to adopt those? How long does that take?
So I'm two-thirds through review, and Cindy's making those changes. Cindy and Megan have attended, or are attending Trueness updates on their, on their manual. Like, the last third, Brad, we bring administrative services, which you've been a part of before. We're, the board reviews those, and then we'll bring them to you to adopt. My expectation is probably the June meeting. One of the June meetings is we'll have going forward because that fits right in with the fiscal year, all those pieces of it. And if you remember, the Trueness manuals are much easier manual to use, plus they're the firm that's going to defend you on any of those policies.
So then after approval, then we would post it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. The yellow ones will go away, and the Trueness ones will go up.
Okay, great.
I just pick up Penny just a little bit, Scott. So Penny and Jeff are being parents tonight. So Penny just got done with a parent event with her child, and Jeff is still at one. So if you notice those two being absent, we did. Glad you're back. That's a good thing.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, shining stars, this is item 5.1. Mike?
Yeah, we have three tonight. So we're going to recognize two people from our JCC Center that we have a partnership there, if you are aware of that. And the first one is Mr. Coleman. Make sure I pronounce that correctly because the spelling is vastly different than what they told me the spelling. I did it well? You can come on up and join me, too. I'll embarrass you up here, okay, right in front of everybody. A little bit about Mr. Coleman. So Grayden has filled as a long-term subposition at the JCC since the beginning of the school year. Before this year, he substitute taught on and off in the detention program. Grayden attended San Diego State University and Western Governors University, earning a bachelor's degree in mathematics. Grayden was nominated by his MPS colleagues. Here are some of their comments. Well, Grayden has found that working with the students at JCC has its challenges, specifically balancing students' emotional needs with their scholastic needs. He has recently found much enjoyment providing students with global insights through his travel experiences and many language lessons, but most notably by bringing in exotic foods and treats to share. Students and colleagues appreciate Grayden's quick wit, sense of humor, his ability to speak the kids' language, and his resilience in working with youth who may have experienced traumatic events in their young lives. A student commented, two, of my favorite things about Mr. Grayden is that he always has fun snacks, is always in a happy, encouraging mood. Grayden is a jack-of-all-trades and can adopt the needs of highly demanding job among the many stars who work at the Juvenile Center. He is undoubtedly one of the shining stars. Congratulations.
And we'll stick with the JCC Center, and Wendy Thomas, if Wendy would come up and Wendy joined the MPS team in 1999 as a teacher at the Juvenile Care Center. She earned her bachelor's and master's degrees from Central Michigan University. Wendy was nominated for a shining star by MPS colleague. Those were some, these were some of their comments. Colleagues working alongside Wendy knows the endless love and support she brings into the classroom. Wendy is very real with the kids, laughing, supporting, and encouraging them each and every day. She's consistently nonjudgmental and is amazing advocate for youth. One of Wendy's most notable qualities is her passion and altruism. She leads with fury and pride of love for kids. She sheds tears, both good and bad, and it's always 100 clear that her only wish for them is to be happy, healthy, and successful. Wendy's duties have increased significantly this year. Not only is she handling the increased workload with care, concern, and class, but she is still present physically and emotionally each day for our county's kids. Middle Public Schools is lucky to have such a dedicated kids-centered teacher amongst its ranks. Congratulations, Wendy. We're going to shift gear and go to Seabert, but still maybe with some special populations if Sheri Knuth can come up and join me. Sheri began her MPS career in 2007 as a substitute paraprofessional. In 2010, she joined the Seabert Elementary staff as a special education paraprofessional. In 2019, she moved to Cheston Hill, and now she is a full-time special education paraprofessional at Central Park Elementary School. Sheri earned an associate's degree from Delta College and has completed Delta's Teacher Assistant Paraprofessional Certification Program. Sheri was nominated for a shining star by MPS colleagues. Among their comments were the following. Sheri cares a great deal about the classroom, our school, and the success of her students. She utilizes good judgment. She has a wonderful attitude and works well with students, teachers, and parents. She is always patient and kind with students and has a great rapport with the staff. Her consistency in her work with the students helped them to succeed. Sheri shows every student compassion and understanding every day. She provides each student with personal relationship, personal attendance. Congratulations. So we started a new trend now, taking it all the way around. All right. Sorry, we had some folks leaving the room. I just wanted to give them a second to clear out. Okay, that takes us to item number six, request to address the board. I know we have had a lot of folks join us since 6:30, so if you have not had your chance to put a name on this list, it's okay. I will give you an opportunity if you wish, but I am going to start with the folks who put their name on the list first. That said, Angie Kelleher, thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Hi. Thanks to everyone who has supported our district's work on equity and inclusion and the recent audit, including all of you, Deandre Penny, other administrative staff, principals, teachers, paras, students, and parents who gave feedback, as well as Dow Chemical. This work is vital, and I am extremely proud and grateful that my kids attend a school district that is investing in learning, growing, and becoming more equitable for all students. Some of my neighbors here in recent months have spoken about school bathrooms and about LGBT and transgender and non-binary kids. Some of them have implied that discussion of sexual orientation and gender identity is akin to abuse. In light of this, and in light of proposed legislation in other states which targets and discriminates against trans kids and their parents, I would like to briefly review our legal obligations with regard to bathroom facilities. A 2016 state board document says, while gender-neutral bathroom facilities are often the solution that works best for all students, districts are reminded that our current interpretation of federal civil rights laws protect the right of transgender students to use the bathroom of their gender identity if they so choose. Note, that trans students already face numerous barriers of acceptance at school, requiring them and not others to use a single-stall restroom is stigmatizing. A school's insistence that they be segregated from their peers can increase their sense of isolation. Requiring transgender students to use the single-stall option while not requiring all students to use this option would be inequitable treatment and may violate Title IX, which is a federal civil rights law, as you know. So while on the surface some may make a point about bathrooms, at a deeper level, it is about the recognition of transgender students as worthy of being included in our public education system. As you discuss any policies related to LGBTQ students in the future, please note that each time their rights are questioned, members of this community and their families are negatively impacted in ways that can be made worse by hateful and hurtful comments in public and in online spaces. You have heard from other recent speakers about the increased risk of suicide and other issues for LGBTQ kids. When our schools provide affirming spaces like GSAs and bathrooms, we are doing life-saving work. Thank you for all of you do, for all that you do to ensure our students are safe and valued in our schools.
Thank you. Renita Bonadie. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. This is the seventh month that I've gotten up to address this board. I stand and speak for those in this community that cannot speak for themselves. There are teachers for fear of losing their jobs, parents for fear of their child being singled out, and community members for fear of repercussions with their business or family. I am a child of God and choose to stand and fight for the children of this community. There is an agenda that exists to destroy the family, indoctrinate the children, and destroy the future of this country. So many parents do not understand the depths to which they will go to steal the very souls of the children. One way is through the indoctrination and perversions that are being taught in the schools through the DEI, CRT, SEL, and other programs. As our elected officials, you have chosen to embrace this Marxist agenda that is going after the children of this school district. In the midst of the pandemic, MPS board members held board meetings and a workshop in the summer of 2020. A board education proclamation was made. It reads, "Resolution to Change the System, Eliminate Racism, and Create More Equitable Inclusive Schools for All." "Resolution to Change the System, Eliminate Racism, and Create More Equitable Inclusive Schools for All." This was done on August 3rd of 2020. Great time to make such a big change when everyone is distracted with the pandemic, such priorities. It is clear that this district is driven by their community business partner's agenda, which is primarily Dow Chemical Corporation. They lent a manager for 15 months, encouraged the DEI program, and contributed to the cost of the DEI evaluation prepared by the California consulting firm and presented last month. The superintendent and board should be more concerned with the education of the students than this program for indoctrination. This board was not elected to determine the values that children are to be taught. That is the parent's responsibility. But perhaps it isn't, because this superintendent and board know that they really do have the right to control what the children are taught in school. They have been trained, and laws are in place to give them that right. It is really the parents and the community that don't understand exactly what has happened to the education system over the past 50 to 100 years. These government institutions own your children if you allow your children to attend these public institutions. It is perhaps best to remove your children from these schools, unless you want the schools indoctrinating them and teaching them values that do not align with yours. The other option is to vote this board out and bring in elected officials that believe in God, the Constitution, and the freedoms we have been given, not the Marxist agenda being pushed by this group of elected officials and their employee, Mr. Sharo. Thank you.
Katie McLean-Peters. Hi, Katie. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm gonna try not to say anything that will get me on Jimmy Kimmel. I am a mother of five kids, four of whom have graduated from Midland High School, one who is a current junior there. So we have been consecutively in the Midland Public School system for, this is our 23rd year. We've been in nine schools. We've had roughly 150 teachers. And our experience, while not always easy, has been excellent. My children are all very different individuals. They learn differently. They have different challenges, strengths, needs. All of those challenges and strengths and needs have been supported and encouraged by Midland Public Schools' teachers and administration. And the first thing I want to do is to just tell you that I am grateful for everything that you do. I see that it is a lot more than just during the school day or the work day, and you're appreciated. When it comes to things like DEI and social-emotional learning, I hear a lot of people saying, even tonight, that school is to teach kids the basics, reading, writing, and arithmetic, and that is a purpose of school, but that is not the only purpose of school. And if it were the only purpose of school, we wouldn't have sports, we wouldn't have the arts, we wouldn't have languages. We are tasked with raising children to be well-rounded adults, because a well-rounded community is a healthy community. When I was growing up, I saw myself represented everywhere. I knew that I could do anything, because I saw people who looked like me doing great things. We learned about Alexander Graham Bell. I didn't know until recently about Lewis Latimer, who invented the carbon filament for the light bulb. Talking about Lewis Latimer in a history book does not take away from, I am shaking because I am so nervous right now, and sort of, talking about that gentleman does not take away from Alexander Graham Bell. Talking about Bessie Coleman, who was the very first Black woman in the world to get a pilot's license in 1921, before Amelia Earhart, does not take away from Amelia Earhart's accomplishments. But if a little kid is in kindergarten and does not see a pilot that looks like them, and they are growing up in a world where, in my generation, many of these things that Black people can do was illegal, not just uncommon, but illegal, then they're not gonna say, "You know what? I could do that. I could be an astronaut. I could be a physicist. I could be a doctor. I could do anything," because they don't see them. There are white old ladies everywhere. And the idea of having people who don't look like me in a school, teaching children who don't look like me, is appealing to me. And, oh, darn it, I had so much more.
Katie, I gotta stop you, but you did great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We couldn't tell you were nervous at all. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board in the audience? Yes, sir.
Now is the time?
Now is the time. Since I don't have you on the list to announce you, would you please state your name?
Yes, my name is John Kowicki, and I've lived in Midland for 71 years, and I had four years in the military. And you add those two together, I don't have to have new math, but you got an idea how old I am. I love Midland. I have for years. If I didn't, I wouldn't live here. But I think there are a couple of concerns that I have. It's not the same school system that when I went through. And I've had a chance, I've been coming to the school board meetings for a year now, and I've had a chance to reflect over my time at the Midland School System, and it was fabulous. And I was just an average student. I wouldn't change anything. And I'm not sure if my granddaughter has the, will have the ability when she gets older to say that. And it was just a couple of things. One of the things, over the last seven months or eight months, I've watched seven different reports on where the United States of America ranks in the world stage in math, reading, and science. China's number one, and we're running number 25, number 26, or number 27, depending on the reporter or the station you watched. You don't have to be number one in my world, but it's nice to at least be in the hunt. Which leads me to, what's changed? I've, I find this, I picked the word concerning, and I'm gonna pick on some politicians, some educators, and school unions. And I'm gonna tell you, I was a member of a union for over 25 years. I've got a basic understanding of union mentality, and I was not a good union member. I was an okay union member, but I think I was a good employee, and there's a reason for that. I find it concerning that there are some politicians, some educators, and school unions, people that have 0% responsibility in the development of children, telling people that have 100% responsibility in the development of children that those 100% people, the parents, have no say in what their children are being taught. I find, I really find that concerning, and it seems to be a standard that's, that's running in our society today. I have had the privilege to watch a lot of school board meetings around the United States. And Midland's is pretty calm compared to most. But what I find is their parents, parents are not objecting to academics. They're, they're objecting to ideology. And why does a school person have the right or the authority to teach ideology over academics? And I see my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
This was not planned, so. Hi, guys. I'm Taylor Smith. First of all, I'm gonna cry. Where are you? I want to say thank you for your speech. And thank you, guys, for all the effort that you're putting in the DEI space. That little boy right there. Sorry. It means more to him than you'll ever know. He wanted to come here tonight to, number one, see the ignorance, because he knows it's out there, and he just, he can't understand it, right? But number two, see people like you come up here and support him. So thank you. And to the people who come up here, I'm not gonna look back there, to the people who come up here and talk about this indoctrination and these agendas, I would love for you to look that little 11-year-old boy in the face and tell him that kids learning about racism isn't important, because guess what? He has to deal with it every day. Even if your kids don't, he does. He does. I'm not. I'm talking to him. And if you look in the tears in his eyes, you just have to understand that just because you don't walk it doesn't mean it's not real to students in our district. So, thank you. Seriously, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for making an effort in this space. It means a lot. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bill Domina. I came from New Jersey. I lived next to Newark, New Jersey, which is, I call, the Detroit of the East. And I went through high school in a place where it was, it was pretty much divided between the races, and there was the areas that you were allowed to go if you were Black. There's the ones if you were the guys who were the smoking drug, drug guys, and all this other stuff. And it was always tension between that. It was really dangerous for everybody, because it was after the riots and after the burning down. And I went to school in Newark, and it was, it was very tense. Then my five kids went through Midland Public Schools, and I was amazed. They never thought of each other as different races or whatever. All their friends were their friends, and it was like an amazing transformation from where I came from. And I really, this was like, the kids are now 40, 35, and I don't, I don't see the purpose of teaching our differences as being inclusive. And I just wanted to say that I, I'm really concerned when we start dividing by differences instead of uniting by our commonalities. And I don't, I don't want to lose that, because that's what made those kids, they are so, they don't look at people that way. They look at everyone as if they're just their friends. And on the terms of diversity and all that other stuff, what I really am concerned about was the lack of a definition of equity. Because what I have found is the people in charge get to define what equity is. And I found that in my work life as well. Whoever's in charge gets to define what that is. So as an engineer, I would like to have some definitions that are hard, fast, and immutable, and not subject to subjectivity. And that's just my comment on that. I really worry about the people in charge making the definition of what is okay. And I'd just like to get back to, we're all the same. Let's just get along, because my kids benefited from it, and I'd like to see that continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Matt Buchek here. Brian, John, thank you for bringing up, I think the main point should be for teacher salaries, that we look at what's competitive and go beyond that, because we are on this island here in Midland. Appreciate the talk, though. Every single person on the planet is dealt an arbitrary hand in some sense. Some receive unfair burdens. Seeing someone dealt a rough hand is painful. It's painful for everyone, as people with morals at least want to help. It's not evident who has dealt the toughest hand, or if any school district could do an appropriate job of measuring this. All of us, though, have unearned privileges and unearned advantages, especially living in the United States. Unless you're morally bankrupt, there is a universal burden that comes along with those privileges. And I quote, "To whom much is given, much will be required." Luke 12:48. This is the common ground for DEI. However, I wish they focused on the moral part of it instead of preying off of our kindnesses. Create an environment for everyone to succeed regardless of where they're at. We would help each other out, naturally, without intervention, without continuous surveys. Instead, diversity is used to create tension, stifle the best candidates. Equity brings everyone to ground zero instead of lifting up those who are down. And inclusiveness is only if you subscribe, and again, the Marxist takeover of our schools. As those with contrasting ideas and opinions are unwelcome, they're excluded. How else do you divine it? Look at what's happened since 2018, when DEI was forced on the district. Teachers poaching children in middle school to be in sexual clubs. Death threats going unchecked on students supporting local police. Mental dysphoria being encouraged in MPS schools. Boys' and girls' restrooms, and the girl being suspended. All students find themselves as the suppressor and the suppressed. It's divisive, and it seems like the best way to create the ultimate control for the funding organizations. What the hell do we all do? I believe time will show that the program is corrupt, and its main goal is to break down society and create tension. It's already doing a great job at that. Some of you on the board must think DEI is at least a little cringe-worthy, like it's bigoted and pretty much racist, right? You see that? When the push to hire an identity and not a person, what a slap in the face. Not only to a potentially hard-working individual who has passed up, but for the person who was hired. Makes me sad. Would they and their colleagues ever stop questioning if they were a quota hire? We need to push everyone to be the best and give them the tools to succeed without the mental charades. Did you see our proficiency scores over the last year? It wasn't just COVID. Middle school, go figure, sixth and seventh grader proficiency in math, English, language arts dropped more than the state average dropped over this time period. But no, DEI is number one focus. Read the end of our emails. Cringe-worthy and shameful.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Evening. My name is Mindy Cox. I just have a short little message. I just wanted to make the board aware that a Freedom of Information Act document request from Rise Up Midland was due on March 25th, 2022, and has not been received. This date was 10 days post-good faith payment, and just wanted that to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Brings us to item number seven on the agenda, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, 7.1. We have committee minutes. Mr. Blasey.
Curriculum Instruction Assessment Study Committee Minutes. We met on March 21st. Members present Lynn Baker, Chair, Brad Blasey, John Hatfield, Penny Miller-Nelson, Mr. Sharo. Guests present Gen Service, Amanda Sherry, Allison Cissonelli, Deandre Hogan, Steve Poole. We started out with staff development proposals. Members of the CIA team presented the proposals submitted for consideration. The 18 proposals represent the key areas of need for curriculum development and professional learning for the 2021-2022 school year and are aligned to the district's vision and continuous improvement goals. The proposals will be presented for information to the Board of Education at today's meeting, followed by an action at the May meeting. Implementation will be based on available funding and will begin after July 21st, 2021. We also had a diversity, equity, inclusion update. Deandre Hogan shared the following update. The DEI advisory team is their next meeting this week, and they will discuss the equity audit. Number two, the Human Library event at Midland High was a success. Number three, the Let's Talk in Women's History Month Challenge. Professional learning experiences are being offered to staff. We adjourned at 2:45. Our next meeting is April 18.
All right. Thanks, Brad. Moving on, 7.2. This is information-only, Staff and Curriculum Development Proposals. Ms. Miller-Nelson.
Good evening. As Mr. Blasey indicated, those were presented to the committee, and I'm here tonight to bring those for your information and consideration, and then for action at our next meeting. There are 18 proposals under consideration. These proposals really do represent the work that aligns closely with our continuous improvement process, and it's quite a process in that we do get teacher and administrator input. So I'll read the list for you tonight of the 18 proposals. We have one that's focused on blended learning. This is just an opportunity for teachers to continue developing our blended learning courses at our high school. Instructional technology, which is paid time for teachers after school hours to have additional support and learning instructional technology tools. Student information system synergy integration is also training for our teachers, supplemental training as we implement our new student information system. We have an elementary literacy proposal that will focus primarily on grades 3, 5, and this is complementary to the work that is already under play. We have a play-based learning proposal for the pre-primary center. This is really exciting, a way to expand the work that's happening at our pre-primary center. PYP, which is Primary Years Program Collaboration Time. This is kind of a bucket of paid hours for teachers to come together in grade-level teams after school for additional collaboration and planning. We have a rather large one, which is MYKIP, the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process. It embraces diversity, equity, and inclusion, along with our multi-tiered system of support work. And this is supplies and materials and release days and paid time for teachers to convene under the leadership of administration and continue moving our goals forward. Secondary English is for curriculum and text enhancement. Secondary Math is for resource implementation. We're upgrading and updating our math texts. and updating our math texts. Secondary science curriculum workshop. This primarily focuses on middle school Maestar and some work at our high school with biology. Secondary social studies is a curriculum workshop aligned with our new, relatively new state standards and the C3 framework, which is college career and civic engagement. We have a proposal for IB exploration. It's time for us to take a look at our IB program now that we're at sort of the third cycle and assess where we are. Similarly, we have a middle school exploration proposal to assess the status of our middle schools and determine what our next needs are there. We have elementary world language, Spanish specific, and this is a curriculum refresh. Similarly, with K-12 music, that will be a curriculum refresh in documenting our curriculum. Keyboarding curriculum, that's middle school exclusive and we just need to take a look at the resources we're using and ensure some alignment there. Mandarin II is to implement the next phase of that plan. And finally, Life 101 course development. This is connected to our Family and Consumer Science, Career and Tech Ed programming and refreshing some of the course offerings there. So as typical, these proposals are for your information. Happy to speak with anyone about these in more detail. And of course, based on your action at the next meeting, they'll be contingent upon the final budget, which I know Mr. Bruton will bring to you later this spring.
Kenny, number seven does not have a dollar value?
My apologies. I will confirm that, but my little cheat sheet here says sixty-two thousand and change.
Okay.
I'll be sure and update that for you.
Penny, would you mind just going right in?
I'll roll right into 7.3. We have a textbook being presented to you for information tonight and then the obligatory twenty-eight day review period. This text will be available at my office if anyone would like to come review it. The book being presented is for our International Baccalaureate Psychology Program and the title is second, it's the IB Psychology, Psychology A Course, excuse me. The title is the Second Edition Psychology Course Companion and it's from Oxford. That's the publisher. It's a well-known publisher that we've used many times. And this will be for both Midland High and Dow High.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you very much. I didn't have my microphone on. Any questions before we move on? Okay. Moving on to item eight. This is Finance Facilities and Operations. Starting us off, 8.1. We have committee minutes. Read by Mr. Lauterbach.
Thank you, Scott. The FFO committee met on April 11th, 2022. We discussed the February financials. There were no significant variances of note. The year-to-year revenue variance is due to the timing of the City of Midland winter tax receipts. Purchase card and purchase orders above the bid threshold were discussed. K7 Chromebooks. The administration will recommend the purchase of 4,400 HP Chromebooks for grades K through seven. Series two bond funds will be utilized if approved. Virtual servers. The administration will recommend the purchase of five replacement virtual servers and corresponding data storage devices. Series two bond funds will be utilized if approved. We reviewed the asbestos bid. The administration will recommend award of a contract for, sorry, contract of asbestos removal related to summer 2022 projects. Budget workshop. Brian will facilitate the annual budget workshop before the April Board of Education meeting. A general preview of content was provided to the committee. MCEA. Feedback was solicited on potential terms to extend the current agreement with the MCEA. Our next FFO meeting will be Monday, May 2nd at 5:00 p.m.
All right. Thank you, sir. As alluded to, we will begin a series of action items, starting with 8.2. This is the asbestos bid. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you, Scott. Bids were accepted and we provided a tabulation for the abatement of asbestos related to summer projects at Midland High, Northeast, and Jefferson. After reviewing the bids, we recommend awarding the project to Quality Environment Services Incorporated in the amount of $105,200. And if approved this evening, series two bond funds will be utilized for the abatement.
Okay. Thank you.
I move approval of 8.2, awarding the asbestos bid to Quality Environmental Services in the amount of $105,200.
Support. Motion by Mr. Lauterbach, support by Mr. Rausch. Any additional discussion regarding 8.2? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Bruton, 8.3, K7 Devices.
We are seeking your approval this evening to deliver a purchase order to Sehi Computer Products of Rochester Hills, Michigan for $1,419,044. This is to provide 4,400 HP Chromebooks to replace the current K through seventh grade student devices. This pricing does include the device itself, a management license, and also enrollment and asset tagging for each device. These prices came from the State of Michigan spot bid and if approved this evening, this expenditure is scheduled to come out of the bond series two funds.
All right.
Move to approve item 8.3, the purchase of K7 devices in the total of $1,419,044 to Sehi? Sehi Computer Products. Support.
Motion by Mr. Rausch, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Brian, one question. Is there a timeline? Are we going to have issues with procurement? Dave, I'm sorry?
Forty-eight weekly time.
Forty-eight weekly time?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Have we received all of our other past purchases?
Yes, we have.
All right.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, 8.4, action item, virtual server purchase. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you. We're also seeking your approval to deliver a purchase order to CDWG LLC of Chicago for $79,679.35. This is to provide replacement virtual servers and corresponding data storage devices. This was from the AEP A bid and does follow our board purchasing policy procedures. If approved, this will come out of the bond series two funds.
Thank you very much. I'll accept the motion.
I move adoption of 8.4, the purchase order to CDWG of Chicago, Illinois for $79,679.35.
Support. Motion by Mr. Lauterbach, support by Mr. Rausch. Any additional discussion regarding item 8.4? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, 8.5, an action item, seal coating award. Mr. Bruton.
Thank you. The district accepted bids to provide seal coating and painting throughout MPS. After reviewing the bids, we are recommending the award of the project to Wolverine Seal Coat of Jackson, Michigan in the amount of $33,305. If approved, we will utilize capital improvement funds for the service.
Okay. Thank you. I'll accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve Wolverine Seal Coating, or purchase order to Wolverine Seal Coating of Jackson in the amount of $33,305. Support.
Motion by Mr. Rausch, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Any additional discussion regarding item 8.5?
No, we need to update the minutes. It's thirty-three thousand, not thirty-three dollars. It's a decimal point, so.
Yes, it's thirty-three point three.
We'll note that. Thank you. Any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries with the correction noted. Next up, or it looks like our final action item is 8.6. This is gifts totaling $5,000.
Because of the amount, we need your approval to accept the gift from the HH Dow Music Booster Club in the amount of $5,000 this evening for the drum major platform at the stadium, music folders, additional music, senior awards, and also transportation services.
Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the gift of $5,000 from the Dow High Music Booster Club.
Support. Motion by Mr. Rausch, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Any additional discussion regarding item 8.6?
The transportation piece of that, what would be their responsibility to pay for transportation?
That's a great question, Brad. I don't have the details, but I can look into that for you.
Okay.
Usually likely it's some sort of a trip to an enhanced event, perhaps charter buses versus the yellow, but simply speculation, but I can look into it for you.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item 8.7, information only. Brian?
Yep. For information, we would like to acknowledge twenty-nine total gifts in an amount of $26,109.37. As you can see reviewing the agenda, it covers a wide range of items from supports for athletic teams to field trips to assistance for the upcoming trip to BPA Nationals. And all will be acknowledged in the credits of this board meeting and also in correspondence from the Board of Education. We appreciate the gratitude of the many donators.
Thank you very much. That'll move us to item 9.1, information only. You will see in the agenda a list of letters from the Board of Education to the listed persons and entities. Item 10, the scheduled activities. In item 10.1 on the agenda, you will find the list of our remaining Board of Education meetings, all scheduled to start at 7:00 p.m. Next up, we have our study discussion session. Are there any points of clarification or any further discussion on topics that we've addressed tonight before I turn the floor over to Mr. Sherrill?
Could be something for future. I just had a question. One, our current policy is the same thing with the, with the band and the note on transportation is, has anything changed? Are we still, do we still bus all of our sporting events the same that we did in the past or have those evolved into different hybrid situations? I know we had COVID restrictions and all kinds of different things over the past couple of years. I don't have to have a full response now, but if we wanted to.
Yeah. Generically, it's not changed. And so for the most part, there's funds that go to the athletic directors or the directors and they choose which trips, which ones they transport through MPS. And then if they use charters outside, they usually, they can use some of those funds if they choose, but it heats it up fast. And if they choose charter buses outside, then they usually solicit other venues to pay for that. Anyone want to add, Brian? Because you deal with them more than I. Yeah. So as Brian said earlier, that may be a charter with the band. I'm not sure bus. But you know, the football teams, because of the size, sometimes the distance, they'll take a couple of those charters versus yellow buses. So we see some of that. So it hasn't changed. They do make some tough decisions, I think, where they want to use some of their funds in different locations and they may choose to use a different source for their transportation in different areas. But it's A.D.s and directors from there. So we build the building budgets. They're in that process right now. We submit the building budgets and then they have some, some leeway on how, on where they use them.
So predominantly nine times out of ten, yellow bus to, yellow bus back?
Yeah, it depends on the group. So varsity football, probably six out of ten or something. I'd have to get more details from the A.D.s because of the size of that group and equipment. Van probably similar, but others. Shore buses, they may, shore distances, they may load up with parents on smaller teams. We do have the van that was donated a number of years back.
Yep.
That's been a great resource. Probably should, we may want to explore a second one of those. But those smaller teams can get in that van versus the other bus and the coach or the sponsor drives.
Okay. Good question. All right. Mike, I think the floor is yours.
So it's read by grade three season, even though we work on it all year. And our elementary students who haven't been reading at low will have what they call IREP, Individual Reading Improvement Plan. And so we have those plans going. Our elementary curriculum specialist stays on top of that with the building principals and each grade level teacher. And the students are presently testing or if they have tested and we will get data back relatively quickly of those who may need be retained. It is our goal to inform that parent before the state does, but the state sends a letter and so we'll try to inform the parent ahead of time. Some of them may be able to file, file for what's called good faith exemption to the superintendent of schools. Last year, because of the pandemic, we were encouraged to probably prove more of those. And we probably depended on summer schools to pick up many of their pieces. But this year, I would tell you that we'd be a little more stringent in looking at those. We're very fortunate to be a district that has very few students who fall below that level, but still we'll continue to work on those pieces of it. It is staffing season as well. And so so far, we've done very well in hiring our placements. We always get a few late notices and that. And we are trying to make sure we have the proper staffing for our enrollment as we go forward. Enrollment, as Brian says, I track it almost daily, weekly. It's a constant kind of push from one year to the next to figure out what's coming in, where, what schools, all those pieces of it. But elementary enrollment looks very good again. So that's a promising number. We can continue to grow in elementary. As you know, we have some issues to the north. And so our boundary to the north continues to bring more students than our northern schools can handle. And at some point, there may be a realignment of some zones where we may need to look at a northern elementary school to, if that growth in Mark and Mills continues to grow. State Street is finally down. So we promised you that would be done much earlier than it was, but it is down and they did it very quickly. So if you've known, if you blanked, Burr Line had it down and it's fully seated over there. We'll see if the seat takes and if not, they'll come back. It's pretty early in this weather tonight. It's not going to help that very much in growing the seat. But it looks nice, nice green spades and that hundred plus, I think your old building is now down. And as Brian said, that, that was part of the whole bond program was the efficiencies we looked at and not leaving old buildings deteriorating and the community going down. And that's the final building of the entire plan. So, and that's it, Scott. It's been a short turn between breaks and one last board meeting, this one.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Last thing on my agenda is a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Rausch.
Support.
Support by Mr. Lauterbach. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's nice seeing you. We appreciate your comments. Be safe and we'll see you next time. Be safe, and we'll see you next time.